So we're going to be recording this so that we're able to go back and take notes from all of the input that we get from folks. So Commissioner, if you want to kick us off, I sent you the run of show earlier with our kickoff.
Yep. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thanks for joining tonight for our Needs and Performance Public Hearing for what we call CD 51. It's good to see everybody here that is here tonight. Lots of lots of people that are used to and working with us. So this is good. So overall, I wanted to make sure everybody knows who is here from our side of the team. So we have Mary Correa, who's our Deputy Commissioner for Consolidated Planning, Susan Moriarty, who's our Chief of our CDBG Compliance. Also want to highlight David Fielder is here, who's our Assistant Commissioner within the Consolidated Planning Team, as well as Lakeisha Williams, who's with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the City Fiscal Year 2026, which is the CD or HUD year 51. So we are currently in year 50. This is going to be for year 51, which would be for our city year 2026. We'll discuss what different needs are, what the housing needs are, look at some past performance, how we've been addressing those needs and moving forward. We are also going to be talking about tonight, not just the CD 51 Annual Action Plan, but also, as it says on the screen, the 2026 to 2030 Consolidated Plan, which is a requirement that we have to do every five years and we're coming up on the time that we have to update it. So we're going to go over that as well. Overall, we will have a discussion portion. So we're going to go through the presentation, then go through the discussion portion. We will be entering, looking for people's names in the chat when it gets time to the discussion. If you, if you end up wanting to speak during that time, please put your name in the chat. We'll also remind everybody of that when we get there. So I also just want to remind everybody that it is specific tonight to talking about the future. So this is talking about the future Annual Action Plan and the future Consolidated Plan for the HUD Formula Grants. We're not going to be talking about general housing needs or other items. If you have other questions about that, please don't hesitate to reach out to the agency specific. If you have a specific housing question or code enforcement question, development question, or you know, you can also always join us every second Friday of every month for Coffee Break with Alice, where you can also submit questions and answer those. So just wanted to make sure everybody knows that tonight is just about the future for the Annual Action Plan, which covers CDBG as well as our Emergency Services Grant and our HAPLA, our Housing Persons with AIDS Grant, as well as our home funds that come in from HUD. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary. She'll go over some of our accomplishments and we're going to be looking at funding levels and going through the rest of the plan. So thank you.
Commissioner, hey, everybody. Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight. So as the Commissioner mentioned, tonight's session is twofold. Every year, we hold one of these to talk about the upcoming Annual Action Plan, to get community input for how we're going to use our CDBG dollars for the year, but we'll also be going through the Consolidated Plan, which is kind of a framework for how to, you know, look at using those funds for a five-year period. So just some accomplishments to talk about. That last year, we funded about 65 nonprofit partners on the operating and capital side. We also fund several programs within DHCD and within the City of Baltimore. Our award was a little over $21 million for this current year. And you know, year over year, it's really hard for us to predict what type of funding we are going to receive for these formula grants. They are basically a congressional appropriation that happens every year. An award gets made and approved by Congress during the budgeting appropriation session. And then HUD does its formula work. That's why they're called formula grants. There's formulas that they use to figure out the allocations by city. And then we learn of that information depending on when Congress is able to approve spending bills, usually sometime in late winter into the spring, depending on whether there's continuing resolutions or not, which we do expect for this coming year. There's already been talk about it. So we are preparing ourselves to probably find out later than we would like what our allotment will be. For CD 51, we received $20,750,000. Home received 3.8 million. HAPLA received 7.2 million and the ESG grant received 1.8 million. When we include into that some program income for some of the programs, the city received a total of $36.6 million in this current fiscal year in formula grant funding, which is, you know, fairly significant. Our CDBG grant tends to be within the top 10 largest in the country. I think we're number seven this year, largest number eight last year, or maybe vice versa. So we're going to start going through the slides and just kind of talking about the Consolidated Planning process. And then once we kind of give you just the background of what the Consolidated Planning Process is, we're going to have an opportunity for the community to, you know, everyone here to provide feedback on thoughts about how the four formula grants might best benefit the residents of Baltimore for the 2026 through 2030 period. This is all taken into consideration as we work on the plan. Again, as the Commissioner had mentioned, when we get to the discussion part, if you do want to speak, please put your name in the chat and we will talk to people as they have signed up. And then once we get through anyone who's put their name in the chat, if there's anyone else who wants to comment, excuse me, we'll have an opportunity for that. And then after that, we will just go over the things that are particular for the RFP process for the upcoming CD 51 Annual Action Plan, which will be the award we receive from HUD for our fiscal year 26. David, if you want to advance the slides? So I think I went through the agenda, so we can probably go to three. So what is the Consolidated Plan? So it's a five-year strategic plan for Baltimore's four HUD formula grants. This is something that is required by HUD, so they require that you do a consolidated plan to kind of come up with your strategic plan of how you'd like to focus the federal funding for the coming five years. And it talks about specific community development needs, objectives and goals for that period. There are priorities that HUD will identify that they would like focused on. And then each jurisdiction has the opportunity through the Consolidated Planning Process to identify additional areas of focus for the funding. This is meant to be a guiding document. It is not a step-by-step plan that, you know, gets followed to the letter. It is an outline of how we'd really like to see the funds utilized, understanding that within a five-year period, needs and priorities may change and we may need to pivot to those needs and priorities. So like any good plan, it needs to be built flexibly enough to change as needed. Can everyone please mute themselves? David, you can advance the slide. So the Consolidated Planning Process in a nutshell. So it has already been underway in the background. We have been working on this. Susan has been diligently working on the Consolidated Plan. But there's several kind of key elements that go into the Consolidated Planning Process. So there's a Needs and Performance Listening Session, which is what we're doing this evening. We do consultations with various city agencies and community partners to get their input on, you know, their thoughts on how the four formula grants should get used. We do a lot of data gathering for the housing market and needs. And then we do some mapping of different strategic areas within the city. And then we develop those strategic guiding initiatives that we talked about. And then we publish the draft Consolidated Plan for 30 days and hold another input session like this one to talk about the draft Consolidated Plan and get feedback on that. And I just want to make a really clear distinction that, you know, you may have heard about or even participated in providing feedback for, we are currently undergoing a citywide housing plan for the first time. This is different than that. The citywide housing plan is to really look at the housing landscape for the city for the, I think it's the next, you know, 10 years to begin with. This is just for the four formula grants. And while we want this process to obviously be supportive of the other things that we're doing in the city, I just want to make very clear that the Consolidated Planning Process is just for the four formula grants, whereas, you know, the city's comprehensive plan or the citywide housing plan are all much larger citywide guiding documents for funding sources well beyond just the ones we're talking about here tonight. Next slide, David. So what's the benefits of a consolidated action plan? So the consolidated piece is the fact that it includes the four formula grants that we have, even though those grants are managed by different agencies and different divisions within the agencies, it allows us to have one streamlined application that goes to HUD. HUD gets one big picture of how we're going to use our funding. We're able to better coordinate between the implementing agencies, which is us, DHCD and Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and then also allows for better better community participation. David, next slide? Next. All right. So who are the coordinating agencies? So at the top of the chart there, you have HUD who sends out this funding. We have
Did we lose Mary?
Yeah, she looked like she froze.
Oh, I think she's back.
Okay.
Am I back?
Yep. Just start over at the beginning on this slide.
Sorry. It says my internet is unstable. Apologies. So our coordinating agencies, we've got HUD, who provides this funding out to the jurisdictions. We have us, DHCD, and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. The Consolidated Planning Division, which is my division at DHCD, we oversee the CDBG program. The Development Division, which is represented here tonight by Stephanie Estrada-L and Eugene Green, oversee the home grant, and then the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services administers ESG and HAPLA. And then we have the Metropolitan Council and the Continuum of Care, who are kind of advisory organizations that feed into the work that we do. David, go ahead. So who carries out the Consolidated Planning activities? So it's a coordinated effort, especially with as much funding as Baltimore City receives. We need lots of partners engaged in this work. So for CDBG, it is DHCD. There's also city agencies, including DPW, Health, Rec and Parks, MOCFS, MOHS, several city agencies, as well as about 65 to 70 community nonprofit partners every year that the funding goes to. Home is primarily administered by DHCD in our Development Division and in conjunction with affordable housing developers. For the past many years, our home allocation has been set aside for PSO. ESG is Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, as well as other nonprofit shelters in the Continuum of Care. And then HAPLA again is MOHS with a regional consortium of government jurisdictions that fund housing, social services and vouchers. All right. And our Consolidated Planning Division, so we have four sections. The Contract Section, CDBG Compliance, Environmental Policy for all the environmental reviews that need to get done to make sure we're adhering to federal rules. And then we have a Grants Financial Management Team that exists specifically just to manage the finance, kind of, you know, all the financial pieces of a grant that this large. Core policy areas for the Consolidated Plan are affordable housing, homelessness, economic development, special needs housing and services, neighborhood services and sustainability. This is just an example of some of the types of programs that CDBG funds. Senior Programs, Job Training, Lead Abatement and Housing Rehab, Legal Services, Supportive Housing. And then specific to housing services, Affordable Home Ownership, Home Sharing Placement, Housing Counseling, Housing Rehab, Lead Abatement, Home Buyer Incentives. This map is a little bit dated. Back to 2019, we have not updated this data yet. But it gives a really good scatter plot picture of how and where CDBG housing services are distributed across the city. So changes to the 2026 to 2030 Consolidated Plan. So the two important ones that we really want to look at are aligning, making sure that the new con plan is going to align with the Vacants Reduction Initiative that has been underway for several months now, as well as the Citywide Housing Plan, the study for which is currently underway, but we will be getting recommendations on that within the next few months here. And we want to make sure that as we're moving forward with the Consolidated Plan, especially as it pertains to CDBG and home, that the Vacants Reduction and the Citywide Housing Plan are taken into consideration as we develop those strategic guiding principles for the new con plan. So federal funding over time, this is just kind of a look at how it has changed. As the Commissioner mentioned, we are in our 50th year of CDBG. And the funding coming into the city for these programs has, you know, dropped significantly in the past almost 30 years. I think, you know, some of that has to do with just the federal allocations get smaller, the appropriations get smaller, and then money gets defrayed out into other programs besides these. And so it just leaves a smaller pot overall. It can also be impacted by the factors of the formula grants, like CDBG takes into consideration population and poverty in their formula grant. So if population drops or, you know, people's wages get better, then the amount of entitlement funding can change. All right. So we're going to get into the discussion questions part of this. And so we would love to have feedback from folks. So if you want to type your names in the chat, if you want to participate and be part of the conversation, if nobody drops their name in the chat, we can also just open up the floor. So really kind of the two questions that we want to focus on are, you know, specific to these sources of funding again, which is going to be CDBG, Home, HAPLA and ESG. What are the needs in your community? And you can certainly let us know what community you're in, what neighborhood in Baltimore, and what idea suggestions, programs you'd like to see to address those needs. I do not see anybody in the chat. Does anybody want to come off mute and kind of provide us your feedback? This is meant to be an interactive process. So we definitely want input from folks.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vonnit Harris with Cairo's Development. I am working in the Cherry Hill community in South Baltimore. And of course, their biggest needs is more affordable housing. Most of the housing stock in Cherry Hill is old and obsolete. Most of the properties were built in the 1940s, 50s and 60s. And so getting sustainable, energy-efficient housing that is conducive to today's living standards is a great need. I'm also working in the Winston-Grovins community. And I would say on a project that I'm working on, trying to integrate the site into the broader community. So street connectivity is a big issue. Also, the community has indicated a need for a Community Resource Center that will provide community programming that will be beneficial to the community as far as youth empowerment activities, food insecurity, workforce development, and financial literacy and homeownership opportunities.
Thank you so much for your feedback, Ms. Harris. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I would just say generally for Baltimore City, I think certainly dealing with the blight, because that has such an systemic impact on property values and as well as environmental and health concerns. Certainly making sure that this aligns with the city's initiative to address vacant reduction is critical. I think creating innovative approaches of how to get vacant properties in the hands of our nonprofit partners to redevelop, I think, is also critical. And figuring out how to incentivize and support our small nonprofits that are just trying to do good for the community. They are not looking to become rich off of these investments, but just really are trying to uplift their communities, I think, would be ideal.
Great. Thank you so much. And it looks like we're starting to get some comments trickling into the chat. Catherine Innis, did you want to come off mute and talk to us about your suggestions?
Yes, thank you so much. So working within the Home ARP grant, working with the service providers is one thing, but, you know, kind of just working through the case manager and, you know, the intake, et cetera. And I was just asking or suggesting that these grants be able to support that, especially if you're doing a one to two-year projection. And obviously, when you're submitting for grants, they're, you know, on a yearly or fiscal year basis. I wanted to ask, I know the home, but it's more for the housing part, if any of those grants support the social services side. And then so that's the main question. So and then if not, could that be something that's thought about and implemented within those grant processes specifically for that? Since overhead for the nonprofits are, you know, pretty limited, but you also need those services within the housing area and within the housing complex or development. I hope that's
No, that's a, that's a great comment and great feedback for us. Both CDBG and the CCG grants provide funding to nonprofit partners, many of which are in kind of the social services space. It just really depends on their particular areas of focus. CDBG has kind of a rulebook for what types of activities can be funded and those are federally mandated, not something that we can change. And then there's also the CCG program that DHCD has. But we are definitely always looking at ways that we can make sure that our nonprofit community partners are supported because they're just so critical to the work that goes on in the city. And, you know, the city agencies can't do it all. So thank you so much for that feedback. Mr. Taylor, did you Sure. Mr. Taylor, did you want to share any more about your thoughts?
Just, just that, thank you for having this. Just in terms of economic development, I was looking around to see if there, other than some funds that go to BDC for programming, I don't see a lot of money being spent on, or any of the grant being spent on business development, and I mean, small business development. And it almost in line with the question that came right after mine about nonprofit development. We do a lot of work in that space and we could do more. And I'm just thinking, is there an appetite for funding for, for economic development activity in terms of business development?
I think that that's, you know, something that, a comment, a very good comment that we will take into consideration. Economic development is something that some of this funding can be used for. It is always, $20 million seems like a lot until you have to divide it up and then it suddenly becomes not a lot. So, but we would definitely offer, you know, if anyone wants to reach out, and especially when we get to the part of this where we talk about the CD 51 funding to, you know, talk about opportunities for that. You can always reach out to myself or Susan to talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Blackledge, did you want to come off mute and talk about? So there was a comment about starting nonprofits and not knowing where to start and not being able to get communication back. And it looks like there has been some additional comment about resources for starting nonprofits. While we do fund nonprofits with some of our funding, it's important to understand too, that especially federal funding can be very complicated to use. And so new nonprofits are probably not well-suited for federal funding and kind of all the rules that they have to follow. But there are resources out there to assist with that. We are also looking at how to use some of our dollars for capacity building for nonprofit partners. That's something that we talk about a lot. So that's some, some really good feedback as well. Ms. Goodman, did you want to come off mute and talk about your comment?
Yes, good evening. Some of the, I wanted to address the two questions that you had and touching on what Vonnetta, Vonnett has said. Hi, Vonnett, spend a minute. Yes, I like to take, attach or approach affordable housing. Yes, we do need affordable housing, especially in our area. We provide, I'm with Go Northwest Housing Resource Center. And we actually HUD-certified housing counseling agency. And to me, the other thing, one of the main things from our point of view that makes things affordable is that if we could continue, I think I saw that in one of the slides, continued funding for housing counseling agencies. I think there are only about maybe 10 to 12 of us in for the entire city. And I think it's really great, the Vacant House Initiative, trying to get more housing in the hands of homeowner, of home buyers to become homeowners. And I remember reading an article that the mayor, one of his things for his new term is increasing homeownership, bringing people back into the city, especially people of color in the, or in middle neighborhoods. And it's great to build more housing, but they have to be prepared to be able to not only buy those houses, but keep those houses. And that's what housing counseling does. So, you know, it's really, it's really interesting and I smile when people, when, you know, about the new initiatives about making, making more housing, building new houses, renovating vacancies. It's kind of like the field of dreams. If they build it, they will come. Not necessarily, not if they can't afford it or know how to go about buying it. So I would just like to put in, not only for myself, but the other housing counseling nonprofits that may or may not be on the line. If one of the needs would be to continue to fund housing counseling services, continuing with the incentives. As you know, in the last couple of years, the housing, housing, especially in the Northwest area, but I'm sure throughout the city, the prices have gone up since the pandemic, making it more difficult for low to moderate income persons to purchase and, and keep the house. And we don't want to see them back in our offices as a foreclosure client. So any incentives, the continuing the ones you have or coming up with new ones, for down payment assistance or anything to help them be able to purchase the house. I would like to put that on the table. Also, we had a developer actually come into my office today. He lives in our neighborhoods and he's doing a house one at a time and was talking about sometimes how hard it is to find property. And so helping developers to be able to purchase and renovate some of these properties so they can offer it to low to moderate persons or be just offered in our neighborhoods, period. Our community is out in the, we call them, we used to call them, and I used to work for the Department of Housing and we used to call them the outer city at the time. So this outer ring, right before you get to the county, we had these large detached frame houses, or I would say small to large, and we loved them, but they can be a handful. And trying to encourage buyers to consider them when purchasing the house is really, you know, can be a challenge. So again, funding for, I know one of the things we do is help to So, again, funding for, I know one of the things we do is help to market our neighborhoods as well. So, any kind of, I'm glad to hear about the capacity building. Our, our community, I'm sorry, our Go Northwest is actually, now we're five people large. We just hired somebody. Thank you for, thanks through the CDBG fifty and other funders that we've gotten to assist us with that, to handle the number of people coming in for housing counseling. So, it is continuing to grow, you know, despite what people say, people are leaving the city, people are coming into the city. And so, anything that we can do to help them to be able to purchase the house and keep the house so we don't see them again, and the house is not put up, is not another vacant because they, they had to abandon it because they couldn't afford it. So, that would be my, that would be my answers to one and two.
Thank you so much, Ms. Goodman. And I'm going to comment, but Commissioner, feel free to jump in too. And first of all, Ms. Goodman, I want to apologize for stealing one of your board members and putting her on our staff, but she's absolutely wonderful and we're thrilled to have her, but I'm sorry, she had to leave your board to join us. So, we owe you a board member.
Yes, she, yes, she is. Plus the fact she lived in my, she lives in my community. Oh, forget this.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm sorry for stealing her, but she's absolutely fantastic on our team. But all of the things that you point out are critically important to the overall work that we're doing, especially with the vacant reduction initiative, making sure that there is housing counseling and financial readiness and creating that ladder for people up and down both sides, right? How do you become a homeowner? What happens if you get into trouble? What support systems need to be in place so that we don't hit the point of getting in trouble, that we're heading it off at the pass? And, and all of your comments about where, you know, funding needs to go is really a point well taken and incredibly important to the overall work that we are doing with the vacant reduction and that it's a multi-pronged approach, not just, you know, dealing with the building itself, but how do you get the people into the building? How do you give them the tools and the resources that they need to get there and then stay there in a sustainable way? So, and Commissioner, if you want to add anything to that, feel free.
No, I think that covers pretty much everything that I would say. Definitely increasing. So, one of the things actually, Rita, that you'll be getting involved in as soon as we get the person on board, but we have somebody coming on board that is specifically going to be also kind of pulling together because we have some additional funding and other funding sources other than CDBGs. So, that's why I don't want to spend a lot of time in this because it's tied to other sources that we're going to be looking at to really expand the homeownership coaching models that are needed outside of just the normal HUD required, you know, what we do to check the box in terms of housing counseling. We need that, but a lot of our residents need more of that coaching model to help them realize homeownership. So, stay tuned for some more information on that. And you all are absolutely on the list, as well as all of our other housing counseling agencies to be looking at. Really, I have an estimate based off of what I estimated using kind of some of the other housing counseling agencies that do the coaching model. But, you know, we think that we have a need for about a nine to ten million dollar a year source just to support expansion of operationally in terms of staff and so forth, to do additional cohorts of, of coaching. So, stay tuned on that one because that is a key piece.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Claudia, did you want to come off mute and talk about your comment? Claudia, can you join us off mute? Oh, unable to speak. Not a problem. I will speak. I'll read your comment and then we can speak to it. So, Claudia Wilson Randall's comment was that we can't look at things on one side of the page in isolation, that we need to be focused on attracting people back to the city, stopping people from leaving. We need to build housing amenities, jobs and communities, and we need to cut down commute times for jobs and schools. Commissioner, I think you can probably speak to this more fully than I can.
I, I think that's absolutely correct. And, you know, this is, I think, a key piece of, of CDBG and looking at how the CDBG funds can support, you know, not just what we need to do in terms of housing, but also what I call necessity, I, I don't like the term amenities, but I call them necessities as well as jobs. So, I think, stay tuned. Also, a little bit more, I know that there are some things in the works at the mayor's office level that's going to be looking at kind of cohesively across the board in terms of what needs to happen in terms of population growth, which one of the key things of attracting people back is we also have to make sure that we, you know, stop people from leaving. So, we have to kind of stop the decline while also attracting. And this is also kind of looking at a comprehensive piece across all of the agencies in the city, not just DHCD as well. So, I think that, you know, what we can fund with CDBG does hit on how to stop, you know, we hit a little bit with CDBG funds on what we need to do to stop people from leaving. We support, you know, definitely the creation of like recreation centers, which I, you know, necessity amenity, where you want to put it. And we also have some of the CDBG-supported programs that are job training programs or, or job creators. So, with the CDBG funds, we're, we're definitely, you know, reaching across all of the different components of what needs to happen when we talk about, you know, our city and, and where we need to be and, and how to do that and how to ensure that we have, you know, housing, jobs, education, recreation, basically thriving environment communities across the board.
Thanks, Commissioner. We have a comment about housing for single men and women. Ms. Gilmer, did you want to come off and talk a little bit more about specifically your thoughts on that?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We are nonprofit, small nonprofit, as they would say, I guess they would say grassroots. But we do outreach and referral, and we also have started the reentry for single men that's coming out of the prison system, not having anywhere to go. And not only them, just the single men and women in Baltimore, period. And they don't have places to go. So, when I, when we go out and we do the outreach and referral and they sign out sign-in sheets, one of the big things is housing. And for some of the men, once they get jobs, they have to pay child support. So, that takes away a lot of their money. So, now they're having a hard time keeping a place. So, what we were looking at is how we can make it affordable for them. When they get their children, say every week, every other week or whatever, they can have somewhere to take their children other than to their mom's house. Because some men, they're trying, but as I listen to them, you know, and we've been doing this for some years, we've been in business for twenty years. And we've been listening to them and trying to see if there's ways that we can maybe build or buy the houses with the developer and things like that and have it affordable, even if they just have a, what they call a, not a one bedroom, two bedroom, what's that other thing? The, the one that's, everything is in one, one room.
Like a studio?
Yes, yes. Even if they have that, they can call it they own and it makes them feel better about themselves. You know what I'm saying? Because they know that they're trying and they want to make sure that they have a place for their children to come and visit with them, even if they get a air mattress or whatever. But at least they can have that. So, that's what we are working with and that's what we've been looking at for the past three to five years now. You know, because on our sign-in sheets, that's the biggest thing that they were signing for housing. They say they could get a job, they just need somewhere to lay their head and make it affordable for them. I know the women, and some of the women, they're single, they don't have children, but they don't want to live with mom forever, you know, and they may get a job that pays fifteen dollars an hour, but the way things are rising now, it's hard, you know. So, it's, you know, they, they use the soup kitchens, they tell us, you know, to eat, you know. But staying in the shelters and things like that is really good and I appreciate all of that, and we do. But we would like to work with, you know, and see if we can get the funding to help, you know, or work with a developer to get the funding to build these places for these single men and women to go, you know. Yeah. So, that's just my take on, that was the small part I had. The vacant reduction, I think that falls under that, you know.
Thank you so much for that comment. And, and it's important for us to hear about kind of, you know, smaller, more niche areas of need so that we can take those into consideration and for us to understand, you know, the populations that, you know, have various, I don't want to say issues around housing, but their needs are, are very specific to them. So, thank you so much for that feedback. Ms. Goodman, you had another comment you wanted to?
Yes, just piggybacking on the, on the point about keeping people in the city. Not only do we, one of the focuses, of course, is bringing people into the city, but once, and to purchase homes, but once we get them, to keep them here. One of the things that we've experienced over the years is that once we have either from new home buyers or what we would call legacy home buyers, those have been in the neighborhood for a minute, you know, is finding affordable means to maintain the homes. Again, I'm, I'm not sure if you've been out in northwest Baltimore, across North Avenue, above Gwynn's Falls Parkway. The house is a little large. Even the shorter ones, like a house I live in in Garland Oaks, it's, it's only one and a half stories, but it has four bedrooms in it. It's, you know, so, and they're basically wood frame or, or brick. And it does take a little time to maintain them. And I, I do believe, I think earlier in the year that the city, it might have been using ARPA money, but the city had the program where they were offering people, legacy folks grants to maintain their houses. So, I don't know if it's, if we can do it with CDBG, but I just want to put it out there that one of the, when you say what are the needs in the community, one of them is finding means and also reputable contractors, contractors, period. But if there's any way that the housing department can, to support that or fund, fund basically the, a program where, that would provide funding for people to be able to make home improvements or repairs. I mean, either if you want to do it for, you know, legacy folk or seniors. But I think that, that, I would like to put that out there for a couple of things. One, it keeps people who have already invested in the neighborhood in the neighborhood. Two, it means if we can maintain the house while the person, even if, you know, although the person is older and they be a senior, when they transfer out of that house, one way or the other, it's still in good condition, which will encourage new people to come in. Because when I was, when I was counseling, you know, folks looking for certain things and they're looking for an attractive neighborhood, they're looking for well-maintained houses, and they want a community where people, where it looks like people give a darn, you know. You know, they want, you know, either through having a strong community association or as we, as we, or putting on my other hat, a healthy neighborhood. They want a healthy neighborhood. So, and I do know, I think, I don't know if it's through the Department of Housing or not, but I know there are some funds that go to the, to healthy neighborhoods, and that is also another option. But also for an option that folks, if they want to do something else, at least be able to have, like I said, funding to be able to, or some kind of a fund where people could get grant funding to maintain their houses. So, that, that crossed my mind in terms of that. And then what Mr. Taylor was talking about, business development. A community, a healthy neighborhood is not only residential development, but commercial development. And one of the things that we're starting to do through a program, through a partnership with Healthy Neighborhoods, is a group called the Liberty Coalition of Neighborhoods, which is focusing on the Liberty Heights Corridor and working with the commercial folks. Now, that's not my bailiwick, but, so I don't, you know, but if there was some funding to help with working, reaching out to the merchants, we're not quite a main street yet, but just reaching out to the merchants, getting them on board, helping them to, I don't know, work with us, I guess, in terms of, or making maybe facade money more available, sort of a side program, helping, you know, making it more an incentive for them to do it. Because again, when people come to a neighborhood, yes, they look at the houses, but once they look at the commercial area, they're like, I don't know. So, you know, they want us, they want a strong, especially I think younger people are more into a more walkable neighborhood. And they are, that, that Liberty Heights Corridor does go through a number of neighborhoods so people could buy houses in our area and still walk there if there were shops that were viable, I guess, viable shops and, and addressing certain, certain needs in the neighborhood. So, those are coming to, some of the things I was thinking about while we, other people were talking.
Thanks so much for that. To talk first about, you know, people being able to maintain their homes. You know, those are programs that do exist and we're trying to look at ways to use that money, that, those programs differently than we have in the past to hopefully make those types of programs easier to use. Let me know if I've frozen because it looks like my internet is acting up again. That's cool. So,
You might, you might just occasionally turn off your video.
Yeah, good idea. Thanks, Mr. Taylor. I'm sucking up too much bandwidth. Can you guys hear?
You're frozen.
I'm frozen? Can you hear me though?
Now you're back.
All right, cool. And to kind of piggyback off of Ms. Harris's comment about maximizing resources and leveraging it, and Commissioner can definitely speak more to this than I can, but that's definitely one of the things that we're looking at specific to CDBG. And I know writ large, as we work on the vacant reduction stuff, is, you know, how to maximize the leveraging of the funding that we get and, and looking at kind of all areas of bolstering the community, not just, you know, the housing angle of it, but obviously you have to have viable businesses and, you know, neighborhoods for people to come into. Commissioner, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I just want to say that the, absolutely, you know, we have several programs that are funded either by the city, just regular, or also with some of the CDBG funds that go towards those home repair programs and, and helping to ensure that those are available. And actually, the entire, the entire Office of Rehabilitation Services within the agency that provides those home repair loans, deferred loans and so forth are, is, is CDBG funded. And we know that that's a significant need. You know, it, it's much greater, the need is much greater than what we have available from HUD and CDBG funds. So, we know that, you know, we need to get, find even more money. We estimate that need actually on home repair for persons that are kind of been in the communities and where it hasn't, like a property hasn't transferred maybe in over twenty years at about a six hundred million dollar need across the city. So, it's a, we know it's there and we'll keep chipping away at it the best that we can.
Okay, thank you so much. And I did see some, I think, a comment in the chat about legacy persons needing grants instead of loans. That, that would be ideal, but whatever we can do, if we could do, if we have to do both. But yeah, we were able to get Go Northwest and partnering with Healthy Neighborhoods, we were able to get some funds last year from the state to do the, you know, and we were only, we ate, we were able to do ten. And those, once they understood what we were trying to do, the senior legacy, that, that went. And then I have, I have people asking me now, well, when you're going to bring that senior legacy program back? I'm like, well, got to find the money. So.
Well, always, we also have the housing upgrades to benefit seniors. So, always make, make sure that you connect with the team, you know, with some of our partners, as well as the city, to be able to provide those services too, especially for older adults over sixty-five.
Okay.
And any emergencies, like no heat emergencies, anything like that, that, that comes into the community.
Oh, okay, because I, I haven't had it so far, but I've had people call up. I, I really wasn't sure what, I don't want to hog the conversation, but I really wasn't sure what all that hubs covered or anything else because mainly people do call up about furnaces, roofs, furnaces, windows.
Definitely furnaces and especially, we have Definitely furnaces and especially we have other funds other than hubs that can help with no heat if they meet the criteria, especially during no heat season, which we're in. So.
Oh, okay.
And plumbing, Ms. Goodman, that's the other one you were trying to remember, plumbing.
Right, yes, yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, there was a question before I keep going, one in between the two, I kind of piggyback together about landlords buying properties um and that rent is basically more than people in an area can afford and any regulation around that. That's not really specific to the formula grants, but Commissioner, if you just wanted to provide a quick comment on that and then we'll keep going.
Yeah, there isn't any regulation um, you know, in terms of rent stabilization or um, you know, what we need um to do um what we need to do there um you know. That's some of the policy work and we are looking at how to do longer term uh rent or uh deed restricted rental and the land trusts are also looking at um some of the long-term rental as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um, and there are additional comments. Um, Claudia, are you able to join us or do you want me to read out your messages? I don't want to speak for you if you're able to come off mute.
She's probably still.
Okay, so, and you can interrupt me, Claudia, if you decide you want to come off. Um, so I think you guys covered this. My internet dropped out for a few minutes where I couldn't hear anything. Um, roof stabilization, energy program coordination, um you know, we do have our emergency roof repair and we are really looking at how to use C D B G funding more as grants than forgivable loans because that just creates a lot of barriers. Um, people hear the term loan and, you know, they uh, even if it's forgivable, they uh rightfully so hesitate at that. Um, so we're trying to look at how to use the ease, the money a little bit more easily and make it uh less onerous for homeowners um to take uh advantage of that. Um. There's a question about the legacy, is that only for homeowners? Is that, that's just a homeowner program, Commissioner? Yeah, okay. Um, and then older adults caring for school-aged children um sources tied to Medicaid spending. You want to take this one, Commissioner?
Yep, that is um definitely ones in terms of, we actually have a prioritize now older adults uh with with children in the homes, that is a priority. Um, and it in terms of when we have to prioritize some of the cases, so that is a priority there. Um, and we do focus the C D B G dollars already around larger investments and actually in some, in some instances, the C D B G dollars are the larger investment for uh parks and recreation and schools, like C D B G is one hundred percent uh the sole funding source of the new Parkville uh Parfee Recreation Center. Um, and we also are funding the new Chick Web Recreation Center as well, so um, they definitely are uh focused whether or not the C D B G dollar is that larger investment or um it's actually leveraging um the other funding that we have through uh Parker Recs or the schools with the Inspire programming um and or uh also, you know, leveraging the investments that are being made with the impact investment areas and other capital dollars.
Commissioner, are you, are you using one oh eight for those larger investments?
We use the one oh eight for Chick Web. We use the.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Camper had a question about operating.
Oh, sorry, real quick, just a reminder for everybody, we have to pay back the one oh, we pay back the one oh eight with the yearly C D B G, yeah.
Um, Ms. Camper had a a comment about operating funds for capacity building for C D Cs. Um, we will be talking about um in the next portion of this presentation, because we still have the C D fifty-one funding to get to, but um depending on what the capacity building is um and who it serves, because C D B G funding does have to serve primarily uh low to moderate income communities um and households. But um, C D B G can be used for capacity building depending on the type of capacity building. Um, and that's something that you can reach out to myself or Susan Moriarty for more information on. Um. Claudia, we will be happy to keep reading your comments on your behalf. I just didn't want to um step on your toes if you had the ability to come off and talk with us. Um, it looks like we have gotten through all of the questions regarding the consolidated planning. Does anybody have any additional comments on this before we move into the C D fifty-one annual action planning process?
I have just one more comment. Um, and it's about the allocation of the funds and I just hope that there's some intentionality. I know the city likes to prioritize their investment areas, which again makes sense, trying to build critical mass around growth areas. But there are also areas of the city that hasn't seen much investment at all. And so I would just ask that intention is um paid to communities that are historically under-invested or overlooked. If there is um some type of investment occurring or or if you could be the spark to help the investment occur. Um, just just to really consider that as well um in the deployment of the capital.
I I I would say we agree. So we do have the impact investment areas and then we also have um our newly defined um community asset building neighborhoods, um which actually a lot of those are um we've defined those in the last three years essentially, and they border or touch on the impact investment areas and then kind of go further along. And then we also now also have uh geographic areas of focus um which continue to build off of those community asset building neighborhoods and then pick up other areas um that have significant and have had significant disinvestment. And all of those geog- geographies are included in the larger scheme of the three billion dollar vacant reduction strategy of which C D B G, you know, leverages and and supports.
Um, I think that is, I think that's it for our comments on kind of the consolidated plan piece, the planning for the next five years. Um, we really appreciate everyone's feedback and comments. We are recording this session specifically so that we can really synthesize this into our planning process and, you know, and and look at how to strategically um hit as many target areas as possible, not only with, you know, the federal funding that we receive through the formula grants, but al- also the the overall larger picture of the work that we're doing as an agency. Um, so we are going to move now into the portion of the presentation that's talking specifically about the C D fifty-one annual action plan. Um, oh, here's the timeline for the consolidated plan, so the consolidated plan, uh, the five-year consolidated plan actually aligns timing-wise with the submission of the upcoming annual action plan for C D fifty-one. So the timelines are somewhat um similar and on a same trajectory even though they are two separate processes that are happening in tandem. So January, March is when we're going to continue to be drafting the consolidated plan. Um, April or May will be our public comment period where we will do another one of these um sessions where once we put the draft plan out, um, the community will have an opportunity to comment um and will hold another discussion session about that and then incorporate any additional feedback on the draft plan. And our hope will be to submit to HUD probably late May, early June. We expect not a late submission necessarily, but we do expect our appropriation to probably be announced late, which will unfortunately push back our uh submission timeline just because we have to wait to find out how much we're getting before we can tell HUD how we'd like to divvy it up and use it. Um. Excellent. David, next slide. All right, so I'm going to hand it over to Susan Moriarty now. This is going to be talking specifically about um you know, the nitty-gritty of how C D B G, the C D B G program can be used. Um, and we'll have a little bit of information about the application period for C D fifty-one, so I'll hand this over to Susan now.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the C D B G program, uh, basically, there are three objectives that anything that we spend the funding on has to meet one of these three. So it's providing, um, it has to provide a benefit to a low and moderate income people, households, persons. Um, it could aid in the prevention or elimination of slum or blight, and that would be more um assistance to that community as opposed to specific people. Or it could um be addressing an urgent need and um the, the case for the urgent need is usually something that is either weather-related or COVID, for example. Um, so those are are not um as common. But we do typically and um typically what we're doing is benefits to low and moderate income people or households. But we do have several programs that are also working to um prevent or eliminate blight and those are really going to uh covering the whole block or the whole neighborhood and that sort of thing in area. Next slide, please. HUD has these um outcome-based performance measurements. Um, and so they have three objectives that they are wanting us to to work towards. Creating a suitable living environment, so that again is activities for communities but can also be for families or individuals that are addressing issues in their living environment. Poor infrastructure, crime, um illiteracy, lack of job opportunities, um, that sort of thing. Providing the decent housing is the second one, and so that's any of the housing activities that we do. Whether it's the housing counseling or the incentives for purchasing a home, whether it is providing housing on the uh basis of a um supportive housing for groups, whether it's building new housing or rehabbing the housing that we already have. All of that is providing decent housing. And then creating economic opportunities. So again, that's the Main Street programs that we support. It is the job training and um and development programs that we support. There are a couple of groups that are um pro- providing support to micro enterprises, you might say, to to help them get started. So that's, those are the three areas that that we can use C D B G funding for. Next slide, please. And then there's the mayoral pillars. Um, and we look at at the applications in light of these as well. And those are building public safety, prioritizing youth, clean and healthy communities, equitable neighborhood development, and responsible steward- stewardship of the resources. Next slide. So for C D fifty-one, here is a list and examples of examples of eligible activities for C D fifty-one. Obviously, homeownership activities is going to continue to be um front and center for us in a lot of ways, and that again can be the counseling, it can be rehabbing housing um for home buyers, it can be constructing new housing for buyers um and then the incentive programs. Um, and then rehabbing what we already have. And pretty, pretty much that's rehab administration to either stabilize it or fix problems. There are public services that we are going to be able to fund. As always, the public services, there is a a limit to um there's a cap that's a percentage of our grant that we can't go above. So that's, that's a constraint that we, um, those of you that have been with us in the past, you're aware of that. We'd like to do more in energy conservation and renewable energy resources. And we we do think it's important to continue doing economic development and job creation and retention activities. One thing that is going to be different for next year, the coming year, is that C D B G will not be accepting applications to fund capital activities from external partners, from nonprofit organizations. We will be funding some capital that are based in-house. Um, but we really needed to get a handle on um on the capital side of things, and so we've, we're going to take a break from capital for fifty-one. Next slide. This is the timelines, so um second line there, December second, that's where we're at. We're at the Needs and Performance Public Hearing. The applications are going to be available on Neighborly on uh the ninth of December. Um, I'm not sure exactly when, if they're not available, first thing in the morning at six o'clock in the morning, please check back later before you um tell us that it's not available. Um, we will be having a training, I think it's on a later slide. But the deadline for submission for the proposals and for the written comments regarding this uh needs and performance public hearing is going to be Friday, the seventeenth of uh January at um midnight, eleven fifty-nine. We're not going to be accepting any late submissions. The applications need to be complete, including all of the supporting documents. Um, we we can't accept them if they're not complete. Then in January and through April, we'll be, you know, scoring the applications, looking at the plan. Of course, we're also going to be working on the the consolidated plan side of things. Um, figuring out the budget, figuring out what makes sense to fund and what might not. Um, and so come April, we should have that draft annual action plan available for public review if all goes according to plan. And then in March or in in May, probably late April, in May, somewhere along in there, we'll have the draft action plan, public hearing. Next slide, David, please. Um, there'll be another deadline for um comments from um from that public hearing and the public review period uh also in May. The application is nominally due in May, but as Mary said, we um you, you know, the word on the street is that they're going to be continuing resolutions in Congress, which means HUD won't get their funding um allocation when they expect it, so we won't get ours. We have sixty days after HUD lets us know how much we're getting to get our plan in, so you know, there've been times in the past, some of you may remember, where our plans went in late because we got our information from HUD late. But if we don't get it late, it's um, I think it's May seventeenth. Then we expect that um if it goes in in May, we expect we'll hear back from HUD in June. And then the program year itself starts July first. So that's when um y'all, those that get awarded can start working on it and you'll know you're awarded if you've looked at the draft annual action plan. Uh, it, just because it says draft doesn't mean that's not what we're going to be awarding you. At that point, we do know how much money HUD is giving us, and so th- those are the choices that were made. Um, so the application, there's the website at the bottom. Um, it's the dhcd.baltimorecity.gov. And then you want to look for the Plans and Reports tab in the left menu. It's right up in the top section. And the link to the Neighborly application will be there by the ninth.
We'll also send out a separate email communication to everyone on our mailing list when it's ready to go live, so we'll definitely provide more communication. This is just kind of a, an early heads up of when to expect to be looking for that, which is kind of, you know, next week. Um, so.
Okay, next slide. So the request for proposals, once it comes up there, um anybody who's returning as a subgrantee, um subrecipient, it should read, sorry. Uh, that's a typo on my part. Um, you, you're going to have to be completely, fully compliant um with all your prior years by July fifteenth of twenty twenty-five in order to actually get the award. And that means that your quarterly reports have to be in, your draw requests need to be in, the monitoring documents that you've been asked for need to be in. Um, we, you know, we rely upon the subrecipients to comply with getting stuff to us as quickly as possible. because we have so many subrecipients and because um, you know, we have to comply with HUD. So uh that's going to be the rule. It has been last year as well. You have to be fully compliant to get the award. There's that note about the Neighborly training. So there's going to be uh an online Neighborly training for the nonprofit organizations, December eighteenth. And um I believe that's going to be a Zoom. I think it's already been set up. It's at ten o'clock in the morning and you'll be getting the link fro- from it. Everybody that's signed up tonight and everybody who's ever signed up with us at all will get the link for it. Um anybody that's here from a city agency, there will be one specifically for city agencies. On the nineteenth, that's going to be on Teams and we'll be sending that out to your email um as as a Teams um meeting thing. Um and then there again is the link uh for the Neighborly training. So that there's going to be two links. One is for the application and one is for the training. And it, I'm not sure that it's there yet, but this is where it is proposed to be posted. Again, at baltimorecity.gov in the Plans and Reports, we've added a tab that is Resources and Training. And there you can find past trainings as well. And I suspect that um this will go up there too. We haven't really gotten to that point yet, but um so go be sure you're looking at the the dhcd.baltimorecity.gov Plans and Reports.
And we will send out emails with links directly to all of these, so um no one should have to go searching for them. We will send out emails with the links.
Okay, is there another slide, David, or are we kind of at the end? I think we are at the end. Okay, back to you, Mary.
So if anyone has any questions specifically to the CD fifty-one application period for what was just covered by Susan, um feel free to raise your hand or put your name in the chat, or if you have questions, um we will have um trainings for the application as Susan mentioned. Um so there'll be an opportunity then to talk through the actual application process. If you, there are any particular questions about potential uses of funds, feel free to reach out to Susan or I for those. Um we really appreciate all of the feedback everyone provided for the consolidated plan. Do please feel fre- free to continue to provide feedback. You can email it to us. Um you know, with any additional thoughts that you have. We want to hear what everybody has to say. It's really important that the community has a say in um, you know, how we uh plan for using these funds strategically um for the coming five years and do, we do one of these every five years to provide kind of a a guiding um, you know, a guiding framework for us. Um any last questions from anyone? Commissioner, any final comments from you?
I just have one last que- I'm sorry.
No, sure.
Alice, um is the the plan for the previous years, is that available to review? It is in the same area of plans and, okay, great. Thank you.
So the old consolidated plan is there um and um you can also see prior annual action plans in that section as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you uh to everybody for joining tonight. Um thank you for your comments uh and uh ideas, questions, and for taking the time out um of your busy schedules uh to be a part of this. Um each one of you that represents the organizations that are doing, you know, excellent work in in the city of Baltimore and um helping so many different uh subgroups and and sector sectors of the work across Baltimore, whether or not it be residential or business development or job training or housing or um you know, some of those green space uh green spaces or green space management, et cetera. So just everybody, thank you. Thank you for being uh dedicated to Baltimore and to Baltimore's excuse me, success and um we will be in touch uh and make sure if you have any questions or something comes to mind, don't hesitate to reach out um after this is over as well.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Hello there.
Hey. Let's give it a minute for people to finish dropping off.
Yep.
Susan, you're muted. David just wants to stay on to test some Zoom stuff.